...to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please. Belkey, Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Seifert.
Here.
Six present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the question, comments, and announcements period, and since we have no audience except the reporter from the suburban life.
A suburban trib now.
A suburban trib, okay, okay.
What's it doing, but we were bonded by the trib.
Wow. What's left? Yeah, I know. I remember the day when we had, what, we had the Met, the Life.
Progress.
The Progress.
The doings.
The doings, yeah. It's a shame, yeah. Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes of January 19th. Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shower? Any additions or deletions for the minutes? In the roll, please. Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes. The minutes have been approved. Receive you have communications. So, any of the Aldermen want to share any communications? Alderman, Kenny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We received two communications. Mr. Fred Wilson on the 7300 block of Whittier yesterday. Apparently their power went out at eight o'clock on Saturday evening, didn't come back until three o'clock yesterday, was trying to get a hold of ComEd, to no avail, apparently, but they got out. And then our Lynn Dubman in our office upstairs got a call from Mary Ann and Tom Shea, complimentary to Dan Gombackstaff about the great job that they've done with the snow, that they came from Naperville, and said that City Darien does much better than Naperville as far as snow removal, so.
They said, "Our Department of Public Works should go out and tell other municipalities how to do the plowing." That was fun to get everybody, I think everybody was copied on that.
Yeah.
I also, any other communications? I also received a very complimentary letter from Mr. John Isherwood. He's 85 years old, he lives on Tamarack, and he just, actually, he wrote this letter before yesterday's snowstorm, but complimenting our Public Works employees for a job well done, and he loves the new street signs. Also, I received an email from Gloria Jiskra in the Woodlands thanking the police department for putting those tags on homeowners' doors about the burglaries. She was very appreciative of getting that information. So, I'll present those for the record. Any other communications? Did you get, I'll give you that one too, from the one that Joe mentioned. Also, I wanted to bring everybody's attention. Dan let me know that another video gaming organization has reached out to us, Lucky Duck Entertainment, LLC. And I told Dan to tell them, "No, we're not interested," and that there would not be any more liquor licenses available. And Dan, did they get the message?
They did get the message, yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanted you all to know that we got that communication. Let's move on, if there's no other communications, to the Mayor's report. And there is no Mayor's report this evening. Let's move to the city clerks' report.
I have two items, Madam Mayor. City offices will be closed on Monday, February the 16th, in observance of the President's Day, and our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 17th, down here in the council chambers.
Is that the one meeting where we'll be on that evening?
Right, because the city offices are closed.
6:00 PM, okay. City administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. Just a couple of items. One is a reminder, the budget meetings will begin on Wednesday, February 18th, in the room here, and the subsequent meetings will be February 24th, March 3rd, and March 10th, if needed. And again, as we always have, we place all the information on the website, so whatever the city council has, the public will have on the website, and they'll be able to follow along for those meetings. And secondly, Paul, I'm sorry, I don't recall if you brought last meeting, I was not here, but the website's up and in operation, and hopefully, everybody has a chance to go through that. And I don't know if we've had any calls yet, Paul, but I know I've been going through it, and some of us have, and it's really, really a nice improvement.
Just have a question. Are they still indexing the website?
Yes, they have three years' worth of data.
Yeah, because you're running a search, you know, the link, the link is to the old address, because I was looking, I was typing in a Google search for Darien Ordnance today, and it took me to the old web address, and then it says page not found. And usually indexing will take care of that. That way, when you type in the search bar, you know, the new web address comes up with the results.
Right, right. Okay, I'll have to ask them about that. Yeah, the original proposal did give us three years, and then they gave us an alternative to go back two more than Paul did, is that it, or?
No, everything that we originally had on the website.
Oh, actually, everything, they'll go back for that. So, that will be up, I know that's a work in progress, that portion, that could take yet.
They said four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks. That's all I had, Mayor Weaver, thank you.
Department head information and questions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and residents. I have a brief presentation to talk about the equitable sharing program, because on tonight's agenda, consent agenda, there are four items that we are seeking to purchase with equitable sharing funds. Those are the funds from our task force officer. So, I thought I'd like to chit chat about that for just a few minutes. If you guys recall, the last time we had this discussion, it was more of an academic discussion, because we had not received many awards yet, and at this point, we've received quite a few awards, and we're spending the money. One of the prerequisites for spending the money is to not stockpile money, so that we're not creating a slush fund, for lack of a better word. And so, it should be fairly easy for us, in a city like Chicago, where they have $11 million in seized funds, it's a lot more difficult for them not to stockpile. Our participation in the program began in March of 2013, when we assigned an officer to a federal DEA task force. Part of the reason for assigning that task force was, one, to create a career path, one, to create subject matter expertise in investigations in general, but narcotics investigations in particular, and also to take full advantage of the equitable sharing funds that we're able to get. Up to this point, our task force officer's been involved in about $3.5 million in seizures, and we have awards pending, but we've also received about $247,000 in cash up to this point from those awards. The equitable sharing funds come with some very specific guidelines. If you're interested, the Department of Justice website, if you go under AFMLS.org, it's the asset forfeiture, money laundering section of the Department of Justice, you can find the Equitable Sharing Guide and the new interim permissible use policy regarding the permissible and impermissible uses of those equitable sharing funds. First and foremost, we want to impress that equitable sharing funds are not tax dollars. These are dollars that are recovered during the course of criminal investigations, most often related to narcotics. In our particular case, most of our equitable sharing funds have come from the participation of our drug task force officer. Some of the caveats for the expending of those monies is that they can only be used for law enforcement purposes. Equitable funds must be used in accordance with this guide and must directly supplement the appropriated resources, so it has to be essentially in addition to budgeted dollars to augment, supplantation. Shared funds must be used to increase or supplement the resources of the receiving agency. One of the examples of supplantation that they listed is for the agency's budget, the agency to receive $100,000 in seized funds, and then have their budget reduced by $100,000. So, that would be an impermissible way of doing things. And one of the things that can happen is we can be excluded from future equitable sharing, use of equitable sharing funds, if we're found to be in noncompliance with any of the mandates of the equitable sharing guidelines. One of the new points in the new interim policy that just went into effect in January is, sharing will be withheld from any state or local law enforcement agency where the governing body, state or local law regulation or policy, requires or directs specific expenditures of shared funds. So, it kind of indicates that you can approve, but you can't direct, and so that's one of the newer portions of the new policy. We can't, we also can't anticipate what we'll get. So, we can earmark those funds that we already have, that we have funds now in the amount of $247,000, and so, we've identified some things that we want to get. The automated license plate readers, for example. Once we have funds that will cover that, then we can earmark the funds for that, but if we didn't have that much money, I think the price of that comes to about $30,000 and a little bit over. And if we didn't have that money, we couldn't ask for a license plate reader or buy a license plate reader in anticipation of getting funds at some future point. So, we have to, we can only spend monies that we've already been awarded. Example of some of the permissible uses, law enforcement operations, investigations to pay informants. I think one of the things that we recently did is we issued a $5,000 reward for the burglary that's completely permissible. Law enforcement training and education, law enforcement, public safety, and upgrading of facilities. If we do an upgrade to a facility, it has to be a facility or a property that we own, it can't be anything that we lease, if we were leasing property. We could possibly, we can hire a consultant, a short-term consultant. We're looking for somebody to do forensic analysis on something, or to rewrite our directives or things like that. It would be a temporary, but we couldn't hire. We can use for salary only under the conditions that we could replace the task force officer's position, if we were not going to go over budget. But here again, an added caveat to that is that if the task force officer is recalled to the Darien Police Department, we can only pay that salary for six months after he's recalled with those equitable sharing funds, then it would have to be, the officer would have to be either laid off or rebudgeted through the council, so. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
What have we spent to date? Is it 247?
Is that including what we've asked for now, or?
Yeah, say, including what's on the agenda tonight.
It'll be about $110,000, $115,000, somewhere about that, because I think it was 96 that we asked for, and we spent about 20 on top of that.
So, we haven't spent the full amount that we have?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, that's.
And we do have, we do have awards pending. Recently, we, the task force officer was part of a $600,000 seizure, and we're going to get some portion of that. I think we put in for 10%, but we won't, we may not get that much. We may get 1%, 3%, 5%, or we may in fact get the full 10%.
Any other questions for Chief?
One more question, Chief. The officer that's assigned to this task force, it's been about two years.
Yes.
Is there going to be an opportunity for another officer to rotate into that program? How does that work?
Normally, it's a five-year rotation, because it takes about five years for an officer to get fully up to speed, and then it has to be an officer, if we choose to bring our officer back at that point and rotate him, it has to be an officer who has the requisite skills that they're willing to accept. Part of the issue is, they interviewed our officers, we presented them based on our vetting process, three officers, and one officer opted out, and they selected the current officer between the two remaining officers. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council, and our viewing residents at home, and to our one guest here this evening. Anyway, obviously, we had quite a bit of snow over the last several days. Anybody know how much?
19 inches?
17 and 18.
Close enough, 20 inches, basically, is what we had. So, it's one of the biggest snowstorms again in the history of Chicago. I believe it rates to the top five. One thing I want to dispel is a myth out there. There's a lot of people out there that sometimes think that as residents are shoveling at the end of the driveway, that a snowplow truck is waiting down at the end of the block, so as soon as you're done, the snowplow then just comes in and buries your driveway. That is a myth. We don't do that, okay? Now, all the humor aside, obviously, we had a lot of snow. With the snow, there's only so many places that we could push it. We basically have 10-foot blades that are three foot high, and are taking 20 to 27 feet of roadway, and basically putting it all on the parkway. Between that parkway, our driveways, fire hydrants, cul-de-sacs, all that snow obviously becomes, becomes part of your apron, if you want to say, and very difficult to remove. One thing that the Public Services Department does is, we go out there, and when a resident calls, we'll try to go out there and accommodate with a smaller truck to pull some of that snow out of their apron. We understand it's a lot of snow, and we understand that we wish we could put it somewhere else, unfortunately, we can't. There's also been suggestions of putting snow in the cul-de-sac, in the middle of the cul-de-sacs. In some cases, that is possible, in other cases, it's not, because of the size of the vehicles, it's very difficult to take that snow from the driveway and maneuver the larger pieces of equipment in putting it in the middle. So, again, residents, if there's any concerns in regards to the snow plowing operations, especially at the end of your aprons, please give us a call. Our next issue that we'll be dealing with is two issues, actually. The one is mailboxes. The mailmen will not deliver mail if the snow, if they cannot get to the mailbox. So, again, we're called by the US Postmaster on that. When the US Postmaster calls us, we go out and respond, and what do we do? Here we go again. We basically take the snow and put it back towards, in some cases, towards the apron. We try not to do that. So, it's a no-win situation, so please give us a call if there's any concerns. The second issue is fire hydrants. Obviously, with a storm of this magnitude, fire hydrants do become an issue where they cannot be seen. We're asking the residents for their help, to come out if they're able to, you know, dig out the fire hydrant if you're unable to, and the hydrant is buried in front of your residence, please give us a call. We'll maybe, over the next several days, we'll be working on that as well. And the fire departments also will be going out there and assisting us in making sure the fire hydrants are visible. Also, I just found out, actually, before the meeting, I had a call from Ben Bradley of Channel 7. He did a ride-along with one of our guys this evening, so tonight at 10 o'clock, we should be aired on Channel 7 as part of a ride-along, so curious to see that. I'm not sure where, I know John Carr was part of the entertainment, so hopefully, we didn't block any driveways or aprons in this evening with him. Other than that, no questions? I have no other comments, any other questions that I can answer for city council?
I'm sorry, Dan, I just had one, and it's because you and I work together, I know the planning that goes into the, you know, an event like this, and maybe just take a minute, because it's not, you know, it's not the 911 calls, you know, the troops out, but there's really a lot of pre-planning that goes into that. I think that's, for me, it's very interesting, if you could share that for just a moment?
Sure, as a matter of fact, well, Friday, there was a major storm coming in. That major storm wasn't escalated to the amount that it was. By Saturday, escalation of the weather was increased. Dan Silvato and I were on the phone probably Saturday afternoon, having a plan together. Basically, the plan was to start the guys with the first snowfall and the intensity of it on 12-hour shifts. And I made a comment to the Municipal Services Committee meeting last week, that it's easier to work with a snow of this magnitude, because scheduling and/or equipment issues don't become that, I'll say, intensive. We have the opportunity to take our crews, split the crews, and put them in 12-hour shifts, and especially with the duration of this type of storm, we know it's going to go for two to three days. So, again, it gives us the ability to put the, give the crews some rest, on and off times, works very well. Our superintendent did a fabulous job in coordinating efforts. We also stayed in contact Saturday night through Sunday for additional equipment. This wasn't one of those storms where the snow was real heavy, as it was the last blizzard that we had several years ago. It was a lighter snow, but again, every snow event is different.
Oh, Dan, in addition to that, you mentioned you and Dan started talking on Saturday, but far before that, you have a guide and a plan booklet that really, really starts, you know, and kind of is the roadmap for what you'll do, and obviously, when you get more snow, you have to kind of audible certain things. But again, even prior to you and Dan talking Saturday, there's, you know, an excellent plan in place that you start from.
Right, and it's hard to believe, but there actually is a snowplow plan that's in place. That snowplow plan plow is, basically has sections in it. There's seven sections. Within that section, there's primary streets, secondary streets, and/or cul-de-sacs. Obviously, the cul-de-sacs get the least attention during a main storm. Mr. MacIver, I apologize, but, Mr. Carr, unfortunately, that is the fact, you know.
I'm waiting, Dan, just so you know.
Not anymore.
No, I am.
We will make passes in cul-de-sacs, we will not clean them up, because our primary focus is to be able to get the residents onto the major drags, especially leading into Lamar Road, 83rd Street, and especially when the county comes by those roads, onto our streets, the adjacent streets, they basically take all that snow, it's like an apron for us, that we have to concentrate on those areas as well to clean them off, again, for the motorists, so you guys can get out.
Thanks, Dan.
Anything, any other questions for Dan? Did you, we discussed getting pizzas for the guys, did you want to do that?
Dan Silvato and I were on the phone Saturday, made sure that the gentlemen all had dinner on the city, so we did offer that to them as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Our best, yeah, as you've heard tonight, that we've had compliments from residents already about the snow plowing efforts. Thanks, Dan. Okay. Let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 141518, in the amount of $477,117.53 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended January 22nd, in the amount of $288,686.84, for a total to be approved of $765,804.37.
Do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belzak? Any questions for the treasurer? In the roll, please. Seifert.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes. The warrant has been approved. Let's move to standing committee reports. Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, March 2nd, 2015, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
What date was that? Somebody coughed right when you said that.
March 2nd.
March 2nd, okay. Alderman, Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next Municipal Services Committee meeting will be on Monday, February 23rd, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
And Alderman, MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our, the next meeting of the police committee will be, is scheduled for Tuesday, not Monday, because of the holiday, February 17th at 6:00 PM in the police training room.
Thank you. Let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related. Do any of the Aldermen have questions on any of the items that are on the agenda this evening? Okay, then let's move to the old business, and there being no old business, I'll move right into the consent agenda. We have a lengthy consent agenda, so I'll begin with, the first item is a motion to grant a waiver of a raffle license bond for signature events on behalf of C-Spar. The next item is a motion to grant a waiver of the rifle, raffle license bond requirements for the Darien Rotary Club. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien. What is a CMIBPT? Anybody have a clue? SD number two? I have no idea, and I think these are police items, and a cage.
Yeah, I think.
Cage and a 2007 Crown Vic. Do you know what that is?
Well, there were miscellaneous items that were part of the demolition, I guess, of the.
Of evidence room?
Of the evidence room.
Okay.
There were components, I think, like storage components.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We've not been able to find any other use for them.
Okay. The next item is a motion to approve the purchase, and this item did change a little bit, it's for the purchase of 34 police department-owned pistols, using Department of Justice award money in the amount of $24,114.66. The next item is a motion to approve the purchase of a portable crime scene barrier from SRN, Inc., using Department of Justice award money, in the amount of $5,197. The next item is a motion to approve the purchase of two license plate reader, reader three camera systems from Vigilant Solutions, in the amount of $35,940. The next item is a motion to approve the purchase of additional equipment to be used with the TI Firearms Training Simulator, using Department of Justice award money, in the amount of $10,050. The next item is a motion to approve the purchase of 40 gas masks from Protech Sales, using the Department of Justice award money, in an amount of $13,160. The next item, and these, the next, the remaining items will be unit bids that the municipal department, Municipal Services Department gets for projects that we'll be doing possibly this construction season. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from DAS Enterprises to provide trucking services at a rate of $80.99 per hour for services relating to hauling waste generated from excavations, and all of these will be for a period of May 1, 2015, to April 30, 2016. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for the purchase and pickup of stone at proposed unit prices from Elmhurst Chicago Stone for our Public Works projects. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposals for tipping and transfer fees from EF Hail, LLC, to remove certain wastes from our projects for this, for the same period. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for the purchase and delivery of stone at the proposed unit prices from Elmhurst Chicago Stone, delivered to the City of Darien for various public works. And the next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Allstar at the proposed scheduled prices for the placement of topsoil and fertilizer, and sod for landscape restoration services. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Advanced Drainage Systems for high-density polyethylene pipes, bands, flared end sections, and fittings for the unit prices for all of the various Public Works projects. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwalk Tank Company for high-density polyethylene pipes, bands, flare end sections, and fittings at a proposed unit price. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwalk Tank Company for storm sewer structures, iron sewer grates, concrete adjusting rings for the proposed unit prices. And the next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwalk Tank for culvert metal pipes, metal bands, and metal flared end sections and fittings for the various projects. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting unit price proposal for bituminous products from K-5 Construction for our Public Works projects. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Pavement Systems, Inc., for the removal and replacement of bituminous aprons and road patches for our various road project, Public Works projects. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting proposal from Scorpio Construction Corporation for the removal and replacement of bituminous aprons and road patches for all of our projects. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Zible Water Service Products for the pressure pipe, for pressure pipe for the various projects. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from DePage Topsoil at their proposed schedule of prices for topsoil for our projects. And the next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new water main tap machine, model Mueller, number D5-39305, from Zible Water Service Products, in an amount of $5,668.95. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance amending section 9-2, well, this, now we go into the different items here, but the next item is a motion to approve amending section 9-2-2 of our stop signs of chapter two, chapter two of our traffic and signal locations, title nine, which is our traffic regulations. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposal for analytical soil testing fees from Testing Services Corporation for, at the proposed unit prices for. unit prices for the waste that we will accumulate during this, the period of May one, night, two thousand and fifteen, to April thirty, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the next item, uh, is, we added to this evening, was, it was under new business, it is now item Z, under our consent agenda, it is the, a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to our intergovernmental agreement with the city, between the City of Darien and, and the DuPage County for the mowing along the county roads and rights of way. With that said, do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman MacGyver? The roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
MacGyver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes. All items have been approved. Uh, moving on, there is, uh, to new business, there is no new business, so I'll move on to the next item, which is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from the council. Okay, uh, then I will take a motion.
Oh, there, there is one item, uh, on the cable channel for the city, there is an announcement that garbage is delayed one day due to the storm.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So we'd like to make that announcement for the people.
Oh, good, good. So that means I don't have to, okay, so people that would have been picked up today are gonna be picked up on Tuesday, and, and so on, and so on, okay? That means I don't have to run out the door and put my recycling out there tonight, right? Okay, uh, with that said, do I have, uh, a motion to adjourn? She's not gonna do it. Oh my gosh, she's not gonna do it. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.[1780.15]